Welcome, everybody. Hi, folks out there. Welcome to our special city council meeting. It's Tuesday, July 11, 2017. Our meeting is starting at 3:30 and ending at 5:30. For the record, all council members are present. We have a quorum, and we'll call the meeting to order. Two items on the agenda for this special meeting are provide direction to staff on the disposition of real property identified as one Jordan Terrace or Sarito Peak. And the other item on the agenda is review of the preferred land use alternatives for the general plan and local coastal program update and provide feedback deemed appropriate. Our regular city council meeting will be starting at 6 o'clock, so there'll be a half-hour break in between this special meeting and our regular city council meeting that starts at 6 o'clock this evening. And with that, I'll open it up for public comment for anybody on items on the agenda. Anybody like to speak to this public comment for this? Public comments open? Come on up for both items, if you will. Come on up.
Larry Truesdale, president of Morro Bay.
Larry, can you speak in the mic, please? Thanks for being -- thank you.
Yes, it's really necessary.
Thanks.
I have a couple of issues I'd like to raise, and they have to do with the zoning map. I've attended many of these meetings, GPAC, I guess it is, and on two occasions, Carol Truesdale raised issues on 3,300 Panorama that the zoning had changed from where it'd been for many years as R1 to R2 on the map without any discussion. She's raised it twice because both times there was a promise to correct it. And there's a big difference between R1 and R2. As you -- let's see if I can find it. The R1 is four to seven single or attached residences. R2 is seven to 15, and they can be townhouses, condominiums, it can be single houses and attached houses, but there's a huge difference between those two. And I don't think that sort of change should occur without some sort of public input and hearing. And on one occasion, you know, Mr. Scott Graham had promised to correct that, and it's still not done. So that's one issue. Second issue is something I haven't seen come up before, but on the zoning map on Main Street, there's a 10-acre parcel for sale between Del Mar and Main Street, and it's now zoned as high-density, and I'm told that'll be 100 residences. That would translate to two cars per residence, 200 cars. That would totally jam up that area of Main Street, make it worse than maybe Newport Beach, which we have always strived not to do. If we're going to go forward with that, I would like to see a very clear traffic study on that area, the impact 200 more cars would entail, and not done during the summer when people are on vacation. You know, those are the two issues I wanted to raise. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else for a public comment at this point? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the meeting. And I'd just be remiss if I didn't introduce Marty Lemelli, our interim city manager. Thanks for being here. Didn't know if you had one of any official words at this point. I know at our regular city council meeting, I'll do a little bit more formality at that, but I'd just leave it to you. All right, great. Glad to have you. Thanks. And so, folks, now that we're done with public comment on that, we'll turn it over to our staff to respond to maybe the initial public comment that we had. And then if any council members wanted any open remarks before we get going, I would just look for council members that are interested in that to my left or to my right. Seeing none? Thank you. And then I'll just turn it over to Scott, and maybe you can respond to the public comment portion of it, and how might that be integrated into the process.
Thank you, Bear Irons. Yeah, the commentary has been an ongoing issue. At several of our meetings, we didn't change the land use out there, and we did correct the maps, and they have been shown correctly moving forward. These are proposed land uses. The gentleman that was up here at the podium was discussing zoning and those types of things. We're not there yet. We're not doing zoning. We're doing land use out of the general plan and local coastal program land use maps is what we've been working on to this point, which is what you're reviewing this evening, your second item of the special meeting today. So, they're talking about the Panorama site. The Panorama site had, again, the existing land use is as it's always been. It hasn't changed, and it won't change until the general plan and LCP gets updated. But we have, at least to this point, changed the land use to reflect moderate, medium? One house per lot, basically, to be more consistent with the neighborhood, although -- yeah, which is moderate density. And that map's been changed from early on in the process.
Okay.
But it is a change, actually, to a lower density than the existing neighborhood that surrounds it.
Okay. All right. Does that allow, even that zoning allow for compact infill?
Yeah, I mean, right now, it's R2. I mean, R2, you have to have R2 or above in the zoning to have that, but we're also going to be changing some of those standards as part of the zoning code update as well. So, a little bit in flux right now about how we're going to deal with those types of things.
Cool, thanks.
Multifamily zoning is where it would be located.
Okay, great.
And the North Main?
The North Main is a high-density residential lot. We would -- you would not -- we're doing a circulation element that evaluates all of the land use, all the land uses that we have. We're not proposing to change the density of that. It would provide, you know, a multifamily housing opportunity there. We're to redevelop. I think the city's much in need of that. And any project that would come forward would be required to do environmental review, including traffic analysis, so we would look at it from that standpoint. You don't look at it or say we're going to change it as any other portion of a process. It would be either related to development. We would look at the environmental impacts related to traffic, or it could be looked at in the overall scheme of the general plan update and the land use discussions that we've been having to this point. But there's been no desire to this point to change it, so.
Okay. With that, if you're ready for a presentation, we'll get started and pick up where we left off on this initial study that we had with the planning commission. It's been a couple of months now since we had our initial joint meeting with planning commission and city council, to which we were going through this process. We got about halfway done, and I know planning commission's done their half, and now we're picking up this half.
Yep.
Oh, pardon me. Excuse me. Thanks. Thank you for that. So, and once we get into the general plan LCP, those comments apply. But at first, we'll get on to our Sarito Peak item. Thanks. All right, thanks.
Honorable mayor and council, Craig Smolinger with the finance department. I'm going to go ahead and introduce this item.
Thanks.
So, by way of background, at the May 23, 2017 council meeting, council directed staff to move forward with the purchase of the subject property known as Sarito Peak, one Jordan Terrace, at the agreed-upon purchase price of $350,000. So, following that direction, our staff moved forward with a purchase agreement, went forward, and escrow closed on June 13, so now the city legally owns that property. That purchase price of $350,000 was actually reduced by $85,000 because that was related to a debt owed to the city by the seller related to a previous litigation that had to do with some land use entitlement issues on that property. The original intent of purchasing the property was to dispose of the property to a public nonprofit group for ultimate preservation as open space. The subject property is unique, and many in the community expressed a desire to preserve it as public open space. And Scott can give a little more -- or, excuse me, Scott can give an update on specific groups that may be of interest in preserving that piece of property we own going in the future in associated meetings that have taken place since that time. So, Scott?
Thanks, Craig. So, as was stated by Craig, council authorized purchases of the property, and we've moved forward with that. From that, from that May 23 meeting, there wasn't a whole lot of direction given with what we were going to do to it. We did touch briefly on potentially working with preservation groups, nonprofits, to work with maybe eventual sale down the road, a year or two down the road, to one of them so they could, we would take it out of the city's hands and place it into permanent conservation, you know, with some preservation group. We have, I have recently met with the Morro Bay Open Space Alliance group, and they're very excited about, you know, efforts toward purchasing that property. And to that end, they're doing their due diligence and their homework, and they've come in and reviewed our files related to Sarito Peak and some of the surrounding properties that are along that peak property. And I have a meeting, I think, later on next week with one of the members to go over some of the findings that they have out of doing the research. And so, that's been, that's been probably kind of the extent of the work that staff's done to this point. We did briefly touch base with Trust for Public Lands, and they provided both myself and Morro Bay Open Space Alliance with potential grant funding opportunities that might be able to help with this endeavor. And I know that, as it stands right now, Morro Bay Open Space Alliance was researching those types of things. Other than that, council requested that we place this item on the agenda so that we could discuss what you want to do with it more fully and more comprehensively, and that's why we're here this evening. So, I think with that, I'll end my comments and take yours.
Great. Thanks, thanks for the background and setting us straight on which item we're starting off tonight. Thanks. And with that, I'll open up for council questions, and if there's any need to go to public comment on this item, once again, I'll just look for hands on that. But I'll look to my right. If John, do you want to start us off on any comments, and then move to my left on this?
Sure. Scott, did you get a sense of potentially a timeline if the council was inclined to sell it to an open space preservation group? Kind of a timeline, do you think, there might be in terms of having that occur? I know it's a tough question, unfair question, maybe.
It was interesting. I got to sit in on one of the Morro Bay Open Space Alliance's meetings. They asked me to come to answer some questions and kind of see where they were at, and they were really just getting set up and trying to figure out what all the moving parts looked like for this. I sensed a lot of excitement in the room about this could be something that might be of a size that they could take down. They were, I would say, cautiously optimistic about that. But, I mean, they haven't gotten to the point of raising money at this point. They're looking at where those opportunities might come from, how you go about doing that, forming subcommittees to take that on and those types of things. Haven't spoken with any other, you know, preservation group out there. That's the only one, because they had a recent meeting and asked me to come. So, that's kind of been the extent of it. They, again, they seem eager, and we're doing, from our standpoint, on the side of staff, you know, we're trying to help them out where we can and make the files available to them and those types of things. So, that's, I don't have a timeline on it, because that's the only group that I've talked to at this point, and they're in the sort of infancy of looking at this. So, I wouldn't hazard to guess. I mean, you know, have me report back in six months, we'll probably have a better idea about where they might be at, at least.
Last question is, do you have a sense, in terms of full cost recovery, what a potential sale price might be for the city?
Well, we sold it for 350,000. We bought it, we bought it for 350,000. I would imagine that would be the starting point of money we'd be looking to recoup. I would imagine also some of that's going to be predicated on what, you know, a group can forward, can come forward with and the amount of money that they can raise. I mean, there is some benefit for taking it out of the city's hands and placing it in a conservation group's hands, because it removes liability from the city, it removes maintenance costs. There will be ongoing maintenance costs for the entire time that the city owns the property. Recently, you know, we had a pretty good winter, right? And there was a lot of trees that were downed on that property, and it required the owner to do quite a bit of removal of downed trees and limbs, and there was cost associated with that. That's going to be ongoing. As long as we own the property, I don't foresee that changing. So, there are benefits, you know, outside of just getting money. So, and that's something that the council would have to weigh, you know, when a group comes forward with a proposal, I guess.
Thank you. Marlaus?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just a couple of questions. I also had a question about time, and I'm wondering if you think it would be advisable for us to put a time limit on this. It might be even beneficial for the group raising money if they knew there was some target date when we wanted to basically finalize the sale. So, I'm just asking if you thought about that.
So, that's an interesting question, and some of it, I think, speaks to what grant programs are out there and what the money's available to do. So much so that, you know, we're in the process of doing our general plan and LCP update, and that involves land use. And you might think, oh, we acquired it, so we should automatically turn right away and make it open space. Well, that would be a low priority from a funding standpoint on the grant side of things. So, you want to be a little more strategic than that, and so, sort of waiting to hear back from at least Morro Bay Open Space Alliance on, you know, what those grant funding opportunities look like and whether that would be, you know, a negative impact to those efforts. I know they're doing research on that end of it as we speak. So, that could be a similar type thing. We put a timing thing on it, then it means the city could potentially divest itself of the property, either preferably to the open space group, but it could go back to a private owner who could develop it because it is zoned R1. I don't know. I'm not sure with the answer to that. You know, it certainly, the larger threat there is that the property could be developed, the higher it rates as it relates to some of those grant funding opportunities to preserve the properties. Not all of them are that way, but some of them are.
Right. But we could do that if we chose. We could say, we would like you to come back in four years with the full amount of money, and then we could see where we stood. Something of that sort.
Certainly, and we could have regular updates. You know, I mean, you could do it on a six-month basis, a year basis, whatever, see where people, I mean, it'd probably be interesting to the council to know that we still have groups out there that are going down that road as opposed to they've given up. And then we probably need to look at some other avenue or get used to the idea that we're going to own it for a while.
And are there any other groups that you are aware of that might be helpful in this regard, working with Morro Bay Open Space Alliance?
To be quite honest, I haven't done much reach, you know, research out there of other groups that might be interested or are able to take on such a project. The Morro Bay Open Space Alliance is the only group that's been proactive in engaging the city to this point. It's, you know, as time becomes available, it's something I want to look into, but I haven't really had the opportunity.
So, all you're asking for today is that we want to say that we do want to sell it to a nonprofit group that will preserve the land.
Or at least you'd like us to look in that direction for a while until you tell us to stop.
Right.
That'd be good. You know, some, you know, some at least base direction that we're not spending staff resources, you know, on helping these folks out and when you don't want it, if you don't want it, say you just want to, you could say you want to keep it for the city, and that's fine, and we're happy with that, and we don't mind the maintenance costs and things that go along with that. And at which point, I would probably stop spending a whole lot of time on it, and I would imagine Morro Bay Open Space Alliance would do that, too.
So, let's say that we put a time limit on it, and at the end of three years, they've raised $250,000. Would we be willing to do, to accept that, or would we say, keep going, and we'll extend it another year, or?
But certainly be the conversation we'd be having at another meeting just like this.
Okay, all right.
If I may, you could also agree that they owe you more money and take a deed to trust and have them pay you a monthly amount or something to reach the level you're in.
Okay, so there are some options. All right, thank you.
We would certainly bring those forward, you know, as part of any sort of proposal that we brought to you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Marlaus. Matt?
Sure, a lot of the questions. You guys are asking really good questions. In terms of selling it to a nonprofit, Scott, instead of just receiving back the money that the city's put out, we could also put different requirements, additional requirements on additional development of the property if it wasn't going to be just preserved for open space. If it was going to be, per se, parkland, we could say, do X, Y, and Z as you're repaying this money up to this particular point also. Yes?
Correct. Any purchase could, you know, could have contingencies that go along with it related to improvements that need to be made, operational characteristics, an operational plan for it. You know, you might want to see those things upfront before we consummated a sale or something of that nature, because if you're turning it over to an open space preservation group, there's probably some expectation that it's available to the public, maybe? And then what does that look like? And we probably want them to maintain liability insurance because someone could get hurt out there. And so, there's, you know, there's those types of things that go along with it that we probably would want to look at and you'd probably want information on before we decided to sell.
So, at this meeting, then, we're going to decide if we want to go ahead with this, with a nonprofit like this, and then start to investigate the various parameters of that type of agreement?
I guess, I guess we would like to hear anything that you absolutely want us to include in any future deal that we might work out. I mean, having input now is good. I mean, certainly, we would get it later from you as well. At a minimum, we'd just like to make sure we're not going off in the wrong direction.
Got it.
You literally talked about this when you agreed to purchase the property for all of about five or six minutes. It wasn't a very long conversation, so we've only, I haven't strayed very far beyond the conversation that the council had at that meeting. You know, I didn't want to get out in the weeds too much, so.
Okay. Those are all my questions, and I have some more comments during discussion.
Thanks, Matt. Red?
Is it unusual for a conservation group to take fee title to a piece of property and then hold it?
Ah, they, sometimes they do it that way. Sometimes it's a conservation easement. Sometimes they'll take a conservation easement and then sell it to another third party. There's just, there's different types of deals out there to be made. It just depends on what you're looking at and the type of preservation scenario that's in front of them.
Okay. Do we have any indication what MBOSA wants to do with the property? And the reason I'm asking is because when we talked about it before, we mentioned the possibility that a group could buy it and then deed it back to the city to operate as a city park, so.
Those are, those are part of the options out there. I would say that, I don't know that Morro Bay Open Space Alliance has done all of that research to see where they're necessarily at with regard to that. I mean, I did, I was at one meeting. I didn't really get a feel for that, and it wasn't a topic of conversation, you know, at that meeting. It was really trying to organize subgroups of that committee to go out and do the work that was necessary to make informed decisions. You know, on that side of it, I thought they did a good job at that meeting. They were, you know, divvying up the work to go out there and do the research, and that wasn't part of the conversation that we had at that point.
Okay. And I want to ask a question about the purchase price. The city paid $350,000 for the property, and in a separate transaction, the seller repaid the city $85,000.
For legal costs.
For legal costs. But the true, the true purchase price of the property was $350,000.
Correct, as written, yes.
And that came from our general fund emergency reserve, and so, we are looking for, I won't, I shouldn't speak for everybody, but I would be looking for full replenishment of that amount of money to the GFER.
Good information.
Okay. Okay. Great comment. So, I just want to go through a list of parameters that you might be looking for. One is I picked up is the time that we would want to give ourselves to transition this into some land conservation or trust. And I think that's the consensus of council for it to be transitioned to an open space, be it a land conservancy or perhaps in the city. But that's, that's the consensus. I think that it's in the staff report, and I think we need to confirm that that's the direction. But you would like to know a timeframe, and we've kind of thrown out three years, but you want to know a time. So, that's one, one area that we need to discuss.
I think a timeframe is good, and then maybe you want us to report back on a yearly basis related to progress as far as we know it. You know, just to keep us on track or to let you know that the effort's still proceeding.
Okay. And so, then, timeframe, report back, purpose is an open space, and that's, I'm just laying these out, and we'll go ahead and confirm that that's the direction. And then, I guess, Scott, I just want to ask you, because obviously, we went through the purchase, but we really didn't go into the discussion on where, you know, to what degree we want, or, you know, we want to be spending resources on this. So, we'd like, you know, a little bit more, you know, feedback from you in that regard to understand, to get there. I mean, there were, there were some conversations about the access road area that goes into that. Could that be utilized, parceled out to develop as a lot, which would perhaps pay for the whole thing anyway? So, I guess that could be one concept. Do we, is it worthwhile? I guess council needs to understand, is that something we want to pursue? And I'd like your feedback on whether or not that, what the feasibility for something like that.
Well, I mean, we have done a little bit of research in looking through our files, once we found the files. And we did find that the city did accept the loop road that goes around it. It's Paper Street, basically, but we did, it wasn't accepted by us, it was in the county when it was subdivided, but it was accepted. So, we did find that out. Unclear whether the access road was accepted. It probably was, because it would be odd to accept just the ring and then not the connection to the actual streets that exist out there, but we don't know that piece yet. That's a piece of future research that we probably need to do. Morro Bay Open Space Alliance is looking into that as well, so they may answer the question for us before we get to it. Other than that, the, you know, amount of time we'd be spending towards it would just be to facilitate the research that they're doing and to weigh in as need be, you know, on any of the, you know, support any of the grant opportunities they might have and those types of things.
Okay.
That's kind of really what it would look like.
And so, what about access, safety, and signage of the lot? And I guess we'd go there as far as, does it need to be posted? The access that goes there, you know, we already understood as we took that, the city's incurred that liability where we've already made that portion of it from the city's standpoint. I'm looking towards Joe to make sure we're, we're okay on that.
We're okay, especially because it's an undeveloped piece of property, so it's sort of like immunities for that kind of area.
Okay. Okay. And I think those are my questions, and actually, kind of line items that we want to check off at this point. And any other questions from council following that? And any council, any questions or comments from staff?
First use of the mic. Your general plan update, would that be a first crucial decision point as that comes before council?
Well, as I was, it's a good question. What I was speaking about earlier was, in looking at some of the grant opportunities, they rate or score the grants higher based on the threat to the property. And I realize in reading some of that that, you know, my initial thought is, ah, what great timing. We're updating our general plan, land use maps, our zoning code. We acquired the property, we can change the land use to open space. May not be the best idea to do that upfront, especially for an open space preservation group looking to, you know, acquire some grant funding to support their effort to raise money to buy it. So, might want to push pause on that for a little while and see if they're successful or not. See if they're able to get any of those grants, or they're available to them, or they can apply for them. And see where that goes. We can always change the land use at the end. We don't have a whole lot of, you know, policy work to do to do that. It's changing colors on a map. And so, and we'll have, it'll be to an existing land use designation that we already have. So, we can do that sort of at the 11th hour if we need to. And so, probably would be looking to go along that route for a while, to see if, to see if it is helpful to have it remain R1. I mean, we control it, so it's not like we're going to get a bunch of applications in for houses. So, it's, it probably makes sense to do that, at least in the short term.
Okay. And what about an MOU with Morro Bay Open Space Alliance? Is that, is there a benefit to doing something like that in regard to grants or other areas? Or at least, maybe we can explore whether or not that's something that we should be pursuing, and maybe it's something we shouldn't be doing. Maybe that should be with the Trust for Public Lands. I don't know, but I'm just, you know, thinking through some of the things. So, that's just a.
I would say that would be a conversation a little bit later on down the road when, putting a lot of this on them, they need to go out and kind of complete the research part of this. I think they're sort of in the beginning stages of it, you know, and there's a, there's a lot of moving parts to that, and maybe they could engage Trust for Public Lands. We've had internally, from staff standpoint, contact with them over time with Becky Remsor, and we've talked about it for a while. It's just that property really wasn't worth enough money to be in sort of their ballpark. They usually look at bigger pieces of property. They're engaged in the Chevron property, right? They usually, if it's not, the property's not worth at least a million dollars, they typically don't engage. Has been sort of the way Becky explained it to me. But she was interested in the property, so, and then she's also been willing to help us out, you know, with, you know, providing information to us, and she even told me on the phone that, you know, hey, if you, if you need help with any of these things, you just let me know. I'm happy to, you know, put some of our resources towards it. It's great that you guys did this, and they were, they're very supportive. It's great that you guys did this and they were, they're very supportive.
Okay, great. All right, those are my questions for right now. Matt, yeah, sure.
As we're going along with this, I'm just thinking, and I think it was John who talked about a timeline, but, and then Jamie just brought up this whole idea of an MOU. As we're in the waiting stages of dealing with this group, our liability, does it increase necessarily having that piece of property? There are some aging trees and there's a lot of detritus coming down, going into different people's yards and lots and whatnot. And then even that's just the liability aspect of it. Then also then, while we're waiting for this, if we do do an MOU, do we start to care for the property somehow? And either cleaning it up, taking in, putting some arborists in there to take care of it? How, how, how do you think that would go?
It, it is city property and we are responsible for it. It does make sense, you know, that our public works folks would, you know, evaluate the site and, and go out there on a fairly regular basis to make sure it's being maintained appropriately and we haven't had, there's no, you know, imminent threats out there, you know? Tree falling and hung up, you know, that it could fall on someone's house or, you know, people access that lot all the time and the public's up there constantly. You wouldn't want to have things like that that were, were a danger to public health, life and safety, so. Should be, they should, we should be looking at it from that standpoint and at least going out there once in a while to check to see what the status is of, of the, of the lot.
Right.
I know that TPL is not the only game in town and I, I probably don't need to say this, but I will say it just for the record, that Land Conservancy of Slow County certainly be a resource and I'm sure that there are other resources that MBOSA knows about as well.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that's part of the conversation.
Thanks, Red. Anybody else? Just one more question as far as maintenance and those, have we, I think state parks could be a partner as far as maybe the environmental science, archaeological part, they're pretty close in proximity. Might be worthwhile reaching out to them and seeing if they might be able to kind of assist in, in that, that way. Which brings to the question if, you know, the city's responsible for taking that and, you know, maybe volunteer groups that might be interested in, in doing some of that. And I bring up state parks as a former state parks trails volunteer. We coordinated really well with maintaining trails and, and of course we, you know, we had to, you know, sign the appropriate paperwork to make sure we were covered and things like that. But it was pretty well structured, but very well organized and there was, you know, good training involved and we were able to, you know, help state parks maintain trails and, you know, I could see kind of a nexus if there's the opportunity to go in there and have volunteer efforts to go in there and work on that. So don't know what that would look like for the city, but certainly I guess we could be, you know, prepared or perhaps open to what we might want to have to do with volunteer groups as far as liabilities and those types of engagements and cooperative agreements, I suppose.
We have those types of agreements, you know, for various areas of town, for landscape areas and those types of things. So that's not, that's not something that's out of the ordinary really for us.
Okay. All right. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on Red's comment about possibly having the MBOSA buy it, but then transfer the deed back to the city as a city park, which then would require us, of course, to have maintenance. And is that something that we need to really discuss in more detail at this point or at a later date?
My feeling would be at a later date. I think there's a lot of work to be done personally. I think, you know, I think touching on that, certainly we know there's a lot of things that could come up. And I think we're kind of getting into discussion now, which we might as well roll into discussion at that point. And then let's just do that and then I'll follow up with some of my discussion points. Marla, if you wanted, if you were there and you wanted to lead into discussion on that, go ahead.
Well, I, I definitely think that we need to move forward on this and I think that we have the outlines and I think we have a willing partner. So I certainly would support that we consider selling it to a private nonprofit that wants to develop it as a, a public preserved space for a city. I think we do need to put a time limit on it and I think I would suggest three years and would like regular updates. I, I do think we need to engage in more discussions with the Morro Bay Open Space Alliance so we understand more, better where they're coming from and, and what they think they would like to do with the property and whether they're willing and able at this point to assume liability if they were to purchase the property. So that's my initial response. I, I think there's a lot of details that still need to be worked out, but I think we have time to do it.
Okay. John?
Thanks. I agree with everything that Marla stated with the addition that we not only look at a sale to MBOSA, but any other appropriate groups that might have interest that would accomplish the same means. And I'm okay with the three-year term, although I was thinking of a two-year term. However, I would not argue over that. And I'd like to have a report back every three months. It could be on consent, just a, a written report of where we are with regards to the sale. And lastly, I would like to see staff empowered to bring back any issues or items that the city might consider to facilitate, facilitate said sale, like terms, down payment with future payments and/or balloons or things like that. But anything that might facilitate the sale for the purpose of preservation into perpetuity of the, the property.
Thanks, John. Matt?
Well, you guys got a little, great suggestions. Only thing I would add to that is just the ongoing somewhat maintenance coverage, checking on it and making sure that we're covered.
Okay. Red?
I also favor proceeding with a sale to a nonprofit group, but I want to ask a procedural question. I agree that we should open it up to any group that is willing to buy it. But Joe, is this something that we should advertise? To make it available to any party to say, this is what the city wants to do? And anybody who wants to engage in that, come and make a presentation to the council? Maybe that would be a time for an MOU or, or something?
Because of the nature in which the property was purchased, there isn't any statutory obligation that you do that, but certainly that's a policy decision the council could make if you wanted to do that kind of advertising, but there's nothing that requires that.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. So just want to make sure, so it looks like we've got consensus on the three-year timeline. The updates and the report back, we've got consensus on that. Consent, kind of written report is, yes, sir?
One person said six months, another person said three months, so.
Three months. Okay, for updates, yeah. And, and it.
I would, I would note that three months is probably pretty close together. I don't imagine you're going to get a whole lot of movement in a three-month period, maybe.
I'm fine with six.
Yeah. Okay, good. Good feedback. So six months, that's great. And then I think the purpose is open space and I think that's, that's what we've agreed on.
Open space available to the public.
Available to the public. Okay. Access and safety and signage, that was just a question mark, but I think that was also kind of a task and what we want to explore. And then maintenance was one of the questions and I would say tasks. And then the, finally, the other one was sale to, you know, any entity at this point that would serve the purpose of open space, be it nonprofit or anything else. I think that's what I got out of that. But for the, that would serve the purpose and it would be open for sale at that point. And then finally, I, I think it goes without saying, you know, we're, we're trying to give direction on something that we really didn't talk about and laid out some specifics and some broad terms. And as things develop, if there's any opportunity that seems like we should have that, that conversation about, you know, whether it's updates or before, then certainly we can, you know, make some sort of, you know, update during staff announcements, I would think at that, at that point. And we would be able to, you know, bring that back to council for whatever conversation that would need, need be.
I, I think you have the six-month report backs. If something's happening between those timeframes, we will absolutely bring it back to you.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Whether, whether it's questions, we need to get direction on, on something. We, we, now we're in a place where we can get to an MOU, all of those things. It's, the, the holding pattern is the six-month report back. When stuff starts happening, we'll probably be having reports more frequently.
And then I guess the final question is, those are, those are areas that I guess we're focusing on and then there are other areas that we may not quite understand and we're hopeful that these, or we, I guess the consensus would be that those are good enough parameters for you to start and as things develop, you'll be able to manage the task that we've laid out.
I, I think I'm absolutely comfortable with the direction where you've gone with the consensus items. I, that makes perfect sense to me. I'm clear on them.
Okay.
And certainly as is with anything else, if issues arise or what have you, we'll bring it back to council for conversation.
And did you, did you catch the, the point or was it about the, the point about bringing back any, or being empowered to bring back any unique terms that might be other than a straight sale?
Absolutely. And they, and those types of deals can run the gamut. I've seen many different ones, so yeah, there's whatever, yeah.
Okay. Red?
I always like to leave the room knowing where we're headed next, so I would like to hear from you, Scott, what it is that you're going to do next with this information and what we should expect in the future.
Well, I'm going to continue to engage with Morro Bay Open Space Alliance because they're the group that I've identified that's interested in this. I have meetings, I think scheduled next week with their members to go over some of the materials, the research things. And so that's the near term is to, is to provide them the information they need, you know, that the city has access to and to maybe answer some of the questions about not only just the Cerito Peak lot, but some of the surrounding area around it. We've, we've answered the question related to the road now. That's, that's, that's a positive. And then potentially looking at the access component, because that's a separate road that goes in there and figuring out what, where that's at. So that's sort of the, the immediate near term is getting some of those answers and that, and that information to MBOSA. And then maybe looking out there and talking to some of the other preservation groups probably to see if there's, what are the other opportunities out there that we're not seeing? I, I think to some extent, Morro Bay Open Space Alliance is doing that right now too, because it sounds like they've, they've had at least some conversations with some of the other groups out there about opportunities and, and have they done similar projects and those types of things? It seems to be, to me, that that's part of the ongoing conversation, but would like to have those from the city side as well. So that's probably where I'm going in the near term.
Okay. And then I guess what I'm leading to is that at some point in the near future, I would like to hear back from MBOSA if they are in fact interested in pursuing this and having them tell us what their plan is to achieve the, the goals that we've set out here tonight.
Great, Red. Thanks. Thanks, Scott. Unless there's anything else, John?
Do we need a motion?
I don't, I don't think we need a motion, but I can open for public comment again on this item if there's anybody else would like to speak to public comment on this. Make sure you get into the mic, Glenn.
Got it. My name is Glenn Silaway. I'm the chair of the Morro Bay Open Space Alliance and yes, we are interested in this project. We are working toward it. You've raised a lot of good questions today. One I want to address is Red's final comment here about talking with us about our plans. It's going to take a while to figure out all those pieces. The outreach and the financial planning and the organization of how you seek money. We're starting to talk about those things, but it's quite complicated. Grant resources is only one. We're going to be looking for contributions as well. I've been advised by some people that contributions may actually be sufficient for this project. Failing that though, we have at this point identified 20 different organizations that might provide a grant. They're small, but they all have different kinds of leverage points, requirements. So our first job is to really develop some good, I'm going to call it marketing information, but a good description of the project as well as its history and what we intend for it, as well as community support. Now, Save the Park was your adversary at one point, but they're also a very good indicator of community interest in this project. So our, our initial feedback has been positive from most people. There are always people who, who don't like what we're doing because it's going to be an expenditure of time and resources for a certain thing. The people who live right at the foot of Cerito Peak are going to benefit a lot more than I will. But I think that it's, that, that most people I've talked to really are favorable toward doing this project. So thank you for your interest in it. And I would like to say finally, we are somewhat tentatively at this point, but probably going to turn that to it for sure, have a kickoff event for this project on September 16th. We'll be talking to the city about blocking off a part of the street for a block party and we'll be organizing some events to introduce people to the project and to the property. So I hope that you all put that on your calendar too. Thank you.
Will that be a Cerito, will that be a fundraiser component as well?
To be determined.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else for public comment? Seen none, I'll close public comment, bring it back. And with that, unless there's any other comments, Red?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Glenn. That was exactly what I wanted to hear. I was, I was concerned that you were just sitting there not saying anything. And, and I want to say on September 16th, whenever you have a large group of people gathered together for a passionate purpose, that's the time to ask them to get out their checkbooks.
All right, thanks. And with that, unless there are any other questions, I think we've, we're clear on direction and, and feedback on that, we'll conclude this item and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is review of preferred land use alternatives for the general plan local coastal program update and provide feedback deemed appropriate. So looking towards Scott and Cindy on this.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Scott will be introducing this item.
Okay, thanks, Cindy.
If you'll forgive me just a second, I have a question I need to ask the city attorney.
Okay.
So we're picking back up where we left off with the update for, for options for the general plan and LCP land uses. I'll give you a little bit of the background. Back on March 28th, you held a joint study session with the planning commission and you started reviewing the general plan LCP land use component, the map. You got a portion of the way through it, but did, weren't able to complete it. I think we stopped on area E, which was North Main. So we will be picking up on area F today. The planning commission was able to pick this item back up on April 4th and complete their review. They did, we have a synopsis of the comments that they made in your packet, I think is attachment three. The planning, the city council on two separate occasions has tried to look at this item, but we ran out of time as those meetings ran long and that was on April 11th and April 25th. And so here we are today and we'll be starting off again on, on site F. This is the, the existing land use map for the city. Area F is Tri W. We aren't really proposing any changes here. This, this area was, was, was covered by measure H and set the land uses out there, so we don't really have much ability to do anything with it, other than to sort of leave the, the land uses that are there unless we want to go do a vote of the people. So the land use. use in this area would remain as open space and recreation. We did receive Planning Commission input on this. Planning Commission thought it might be a good idea to maybe get some better input on the boundaries of this, and to do a little research into the referendum that resulted in the land use changes that were made to this property. We are doing a little bit of that right now through the, both this and the zoning update portion of the update process. They thought that this area also lacked commercial context, meaning it doesn't have any connection to other commercial areas in town, but again, there's not a lot we can do with that unless we want to go back through the vote process to change land uses over here, to reconfigure it, and there hasn't, at least to this point, seemed to be much appetite for that.
Scott, is the year of this voter referendum correct, 1990? I thought it was a decade earlier.
That was the, yeah, there was a measure that preceded it. I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. And the only reason I pointed out, I'm like, I don't know if it's important necessarily to have the, if it's, I might be wrong, but if...
Yeah, I think it's 90 or 91, but the previous one, which was like a Measure B or something that had more commercial on it, and I think some residential perhaps, was that it, or? No, it just had more commercial in the, so in the area that's green along the bottom of that sort of polygon there, that area, a good chunk of that was also commercial, like visitor-serving commercial, actually.
Well, we were talking, I remember that, and we were talking about putting the, well, it was the Williams Brothers grocery store there. And so I'm just looking at the date, and I just want to make sure that that's okay to have that date in there. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay, no problem. I guess we're going to go by the site by site, and I might as well take the comments site by site. It doesn't really make a lot of sense to go through the whole thing, and then ask you to give comments from the back. So is there any comments on this site?
Thank you. Could you comment if the July 10th letter from Coastal Commission regarding Tri W site property impacts the decision that we're making here, or the current use that you have, and could you interpret this for me?
That's a fantastic question.
Thank you.
In fact, we answered it not 20 minutes before this meeting started. We were able to get Kevin, we were able to get the Coastal Commission on the phone and ask them exactly what their letter meant, because it was not abundantly clear to either Cindy or myself. And essentially what they were pointing out was, hey, these are areas where you might want to consider land use changes, and so we pointed out to them that this area would take a little more than us making a decision that we would like it to be changed. It takes a vote. And he's like, okay, well, I was just pointing it out. And so, and that was really the theme for the other sites that they were pointing out as well. They're saying, hey, you might want to consider other uses in these areas, because since you're looking at your overall land use, now is the time to try to take those under consideration. No, that, well, this might work. The other two areas, you can see that, one of them was right here, and then another one was this little purple industrial area that's associated with the Chevron property. Those were the other two sites that they were talking about, and really saying, since you're bringing this up now, and you have it proposed to change in your alternatives, you might want to consider them for those areas. The green area here is PG&E property, and the power line corridor runs through there. That's probably never going to be developed as anything, other than, you know, unless the switch station goes away, which seems fairly unlikely, since it provides most of the power to the central coast. In the north, I mean, this, I guess, could change. It was an industrial facility before. There might be other applications for it in the future, I don't know. We ran it through General Plan Advisory Committee and GPAC, and they just said, leave it as it is. Didn't garner a whole lot of conversation, other than each body spoke to it a little bit, and said, yeah, I think it's probably fine the way that it is, until we figure out what we're doing over here. We have an item later on, when we get to the areas that are outside city limits, where we'll speak a little bit more about the Chevron property and things that are around it, and maybe it's better to have that conversation in that context, at least for that piece that's at the north end of town.
So can I assume that you've incorporated into your comments that you're making now, that conversation you had today with Coastal, and that I cannot have to refer to this each time when you hit one of those areas?
Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Thanks. So Scott, just to get restarted on here, so as looking at this slide in the page, we're on page 30, but we were halfway through this when we left off, so you're picking us up where we left off.
Correct.
And so I'm on page 30, you want feedback on this item, and we're going to go through each item all the way through.
Yep.
Good to go.
Okay.
Looking for, so go ahead and guide us through it, and then we'll look for comments on every one of these.
I mean, I know we're not asking you much to go on here, because we have very limited potential to change it, but if there are comments, questions, what have you, I'd be happy to answer them. Other than that, we'll move on to the next item.
I would like, oh, sorry. Sorry, Red. I just thought, well, maybe just a brief overview as we get there, instead of, hey, any comments? Just kind of, just highlight it a little bit, and then we'll look for comments. So I'm sorry to interrupt you, Red.
Sorry. For this piece, the Tri W, I would like to see, like us to keep in mind the potential to put a street through there that connects the Harbor Track to the interchange of Highway 1 and Morro Bay Boulevard, if there is ever any kind of development in there to make that one of the conditions, because they really do need a second point of egress.
Anybody else? Okay. Okay, thanks. Ma'am, so we'll just get that. So we have, we're in the middle of the special meeting. Our City Council meeting starts at 6 o'clock? Okay, yep. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving on to Site G, which is sort of the Highway 41 corridor east of the highway.
Okay.
So we do have some, the preferred alternative is to change the parcels that are at the Mobile Home Park from visitor-serving commercial to medium-density residential, with a policy insert that would go into the zoning. Once we implement this, the zoning portion of it would accommodate the visitor-serving RV park that's there, and I'll go back one slide and say, the property that we're talking about is this area in orange. It is designated in our current land use as visitor-serving, and a portion of the site is visitor-serving. It does have, it does have RVs on it, but about half of it or more has mobile homes on it, and so it was sort of an inconsistent use there. And then a portion of the site is zoned industrial, so it was, had a land use that was related to industrial. So we're trying to clean up some of those inconsistencies at this point. And then we're also redesignating the area that's adjacent to Highway 41 on the north side of the highway in this area here, and then going back another two lots along Main Street, redesignating that to visitor-serving commercial. That's one of our gateway areas into the city, and both the General Plan Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission identified that as a key location, as does your draft economic development strategic plan that you'll be seeing in a future meeting coming up, identifies that as one of the main gateways, and to have, you know, better architecture and better landscaping, those types of things in those areas, and so this sort of goes along with that.
How about the neighborhood commercial in red on the north side? Can you talk a little bit about that?
That's the existing land use there that hasn't changed. It was supposed to change.
So, and basically, the trailer park there and would...
Yeah, so two changes is the property here that's in orange, and then changing these two properties here, these two areas here that are sort of in this brownish-red color, and then going over here, two more lots on Main, changing that, those to visitor-serving commercial.
Got it. Thank you.
I just have one question. Is that the lot where the Sonic Burger is planning on going?
Correct.
So is that still in the works? Are we...
It's approved, correct. Yeah, it was approved by Planning Commission, and we're just waiting for them to come forward with construction documents to build it.
Two questions. Does the anticipated roundabout have any impacts on this land use changes, and anything that might have been considered for that?
The roundabout has no real impact as it relates to land use, no. We did look at the roundabout configuration when we went through the approval process for Sonic, though. We did, so that project and its design and its layout does accommodate at least the roundabout design, such as it is now, which I think is a 30% design or what have you, so.
And north of Arle Street, the general light industrial in the middle there, is that, has that been existing and continuing?
Correct. That's Mission Linen. Yeah, so it is. There's no change proposed, that's what it's been, and that's the use that's there. So it's actually accurate.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
I just have a general question that I'd like to ask now, since it's related to this topic, and that is, when you approached the general plan, if there's an existing land use that may or may not be compatible with what we'd like to see in the future, is the general approach to basically change the map to make it consistent with what's already there, or to in fact change it so that in the future, we could make it something different?
Yes. It depends on where you're at, so the answer can be yes to both of those things. In some instances, it makes a lot of sense to make your land use consistent with what's on the ground. In several instances where we had inconsistencies, a little unclear how we got there, since it's been in place for a very long time, and then the things that were on that property have been in place for a very long time, and you're kind of like, well, how did they put that land use on top of it if it was never consistent? But that's what we're trying to fix, and where it makes sense to change it, we're doing that, too. An example, and I apologize for not touching on this, but the Planning Commission's input to this area was that they had concern about the industrial land uses in this area here, as you're coming into town.
Right.
But those areas are predominantly, you know, industrial. We have Ace Hardware and whatnot over there, so they were kicking the tires on the idea of maybe changing it to something else. Sort of becomes a little problematic, because then it makes those things non-conforming, and what if Ace wanted to expand? Would we not want them to? I don't know, you know? So they sort of struggled with that as well. These were sort of comments that they had, and they didn't really say, we absolutely want to do it. They just sort of talked about it a little bit. And they also talked about maybe just reducing the number of land uses that are allowed within that industrial category for this area, and so I think the resolution is going to be pushed out through zoning, and what we allow in these areas, so we don't get a large expansive of industrial uses in this that are maybe full-blown industrial uses, whereas more, maybe more like the miners type thing. And then they also talked about, maybe this is an area where we add high-density residential. Although, you know, this, changing this to medium-density residential does allow for residential opportunities there, and does allow for expansion of that, the residential use that's there, whereas they wouldn't have been able to do that from the Mobile Home Park standpoint previously, so.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on the comment about industrial. Considering just the diversity and what we might want in the community, is there any reason why we wouldn't want to retain the industry zoning? I mean, we struggle with space for some, what I would consider cottage industry, industry, and I just, and we're at the beginning stages of this, but to me, it seems as though I wouldn't want to inhibit that, considering we have very limited space for those types of, to develop those types of things, so.
Planning Commission was, I mean, it's, Planning Commission was on track of what you're saying, actually. They were concerned about the ability to have other industrial uses located in that area that's up there as you're sort of coming into town, the eastern most portion of that area in purple. And I think that's what they said, well, maybe we should look at this inside of the zoning code, and maybe ratchet down the overall number of industrial uses that could go there. So they're more like cottage industry-type things versus a construction yard. Construction yard there, because it's an entryway to the city, maybe doesn't look as nice as some of these other things could be. Like, maybe things in buildings are nice, but maybe things that are outside and open and sort of unkept and don't look particularly great, might not be what you want to locate there, because that's what everybody sees as they're rolling into the city. And so that was kind of where they were coming in on that, and so I expect to have some expanded discussion on that as we get into zoning.
Okay, all right. Next page.
Are we all good? Was there any other comments?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, so the next site is Site H, and so that's on the waterfront areas, related to another item on our regularly scheduled agenda this evening. There's both the desire by the community, and our General Plan Advisory Committee and your Planning Commission, to do a better job of just defining what is meant in Measure D. There are sort of some inherent conflicts in the language that's in there, and sort of figuring out what that is, and then better defining that and putting that in your land use documents is probably a good idea. So at least everybody knows when they come to the city and they read it in your zoning code, what at least the city expects to have happen out there. We don't have that right now, and you just have the language that's in Measure D, and again, there's some, it lacks sort of clarity, really. And hence the reason, again, it's on your agenda this evening as a regular item on the regularly scheduled City Council meeting. We're not proposing much in the way of changes here. Really, what we'll be doing is doing some cleanup to, whoops, these areas in the purple here, as it relates to land use and then zoning. There's some inconsistency between the two. We're making those consistent with our zoning map, because right now they're not.
Scott, so as this item that's coming up on our agenda later tonight at City Council, and one of the recommendations from staff was for the Harbor Advisory Board to work with Planning Commission. As we okay this, whatever sort of amendments or adjustments that they make later down the road, would be no problem putting it back into this?
No problem at all. We would probably want that Measure D discussion to primarily live in our zoning code versus the general plan and LCP, just because it makes sense, because that's the uses on the ground, and that tells people what we're doing, and that's what people look to when they say, hey, I want to acquire at least space over here. What can I do? It's good to have that in your zoning, so it's in a table, and you go, oh, I can do these things. And so we're going to do our, I think, hopefully when we're done, we're going to do our best to make that happen, and so things are a little more clear, at least from what the expectation is on the side of the city. There was, does that answer the question?
I think so, because I understand you used the wonderful example of putting a table of expectations, but then also you made the comment a few sentences before about the ambiguities in Measure D. So when we come up with that clarity of linear expectations, should we take that and translate that into clarity within the general plan?
So if you're asking me what I think it'll look like, I think it'll look like a section in our zoning code that has a preamble to it that says, this is what the city thinks it means, and then it'll be reinforced by the table, because that'll have the allowed uses that can go in there, and then that'll be what it is.
Got it.
I think that's what it's going to look like.
No, no, that makes complete sense. I'm just thinking also, in terms of looking at this page, in terms of taking out those ambiguities, so that there, when someone's just looking at the general plan, they'd be able to say, oh, I understand what it is.
I do think the general plan will have, you know, a more general discussion of it, you know, just recognizing that it exists. The general plan will speak to all of the measures that exist in the city, so it'll have that general, you know, reference in it, but I think where we get specific will be in the zoning. That's kind of how I see it. There was PC input on this, and I didn't touch on that first, so if you don't mind, I'll go into that as well. They, again, agree with providing better definition of Measure D, and they also talked about the area north of Coleman Drive should not be commercial recreational fishing, but should be open space recreation. So talking about the area in here, changing the land use. They said it may not be possible to change because of the Measure D, and so that's one of the things we haven't really figured out yet. I think it'll become more clear as we work through the process of better defining it. We'll be, we'll know then when we get done whether that makes sense or not. I think it's a little premature to get there, and so while they said, oh, we should change it, they also said, hmm, maybe we should wait to make that decision until we've actually had the conversation.
Does Measure D, Scott, extend down the north of Barcadero down to the storage yard down on the creek?
I believe it extends all along that area, yes.
Okay, so with that in mind, talking about the north of Barcadero, changing it to, what'd you say, open space recreational, okay, I'm just thinking, looking on the north of Barcadero Road right there, and looking at the storage yard, the harbor yard there.
And that's the area that turns and goes out towards Target And that's the area that turns and goes out towards Target Rock and stuff, they're really talking about that area, and probably it's a little odd that we have commercial recreational fishing over that whole area when that's not what we're doing there. What we're doing there is mostly open space recreational uses. We have a path that goes out there, people on bikes and walking and looking at sea otters and things like that, so, yeah. So might be, this is one of those scenarios that Councilmember McPherson brought up, should we have our land use reflect what people are doing out there? And that doesn't seem like a stretch, so anyway.
Yeah, I just wanted clarification. So Measure D is what is driving our classification of this as commercial recreational fishing, is that correct?
Well, the problem is, if you see here, that, whoops, that land use is here and then over here, so it stretches around the corner there. It might be a good idea at some point to change that and cut it off somewhere in here and say, "This is the open space recreational portion." In the area where you can actually do fishing operational-type things, could maintain that land use or some other land use, I don't know. It just, it didn't make a lot of sense once you got out there towards the Target Rock area, what are we, why is this commercial fishing when that's not what's happening there? It's literally recreationally oriented, I guess.
So you are considering making that change, is that correct?
I think so, yeah. I mean, I think it makes sense for how it's, I mean, it's one of those things, that's how it's used, and that sort of makes sense, you know, unless council has ideas towards something else.
Any other questions, John, Red?
Excuse me, I was interested in the PC's mention of transportation route through there.
So yeah, Planning Commission does suggest that we need a secondary access route between Highway 1 and the Embarcadero. So, you know, I think what that looks like is, you know, we put the bridge in over Moreau Creek, and that's a pedestrian and bicycle bridge at this point, so not a secondary means of vehicular access. I think when, if Dynegy redevelops, our secondary means of ingress and egress to there is going to be through there, because anything that you put there is probably going to generate enough traffic that it would pretty much choke the Embarcadero. I don't know that we could make something happen there if we didn't have a secondary means of access to Highway 1, so I think that's not, I think that's probably something that will happen related to any redevelopment of that site, and we'll be evaluating as part of that.
Yes, and in addition to increased traffic by use, also any construction or deconstruction activities that take place on Dynegy are going to generate a lot of heavy truck traffic, and I'm sure we don't want to run them through the Embarcadero in downtown.
Absolutely not.
Any other questions? I have just a couple of them. So I just want to be clear, so I guess my question would be, as it's laid out now, the recommendation was in the Coleman Drive area that's in pink, that perhaps that should be open space.
Open space recreation.
Yeah, and so I guess my question would be this, Scott, is as it's laid out right now, the development portion of the Harbor Walk and the fencing that State Park has put in there is environmental-sensitive area. So would, as an exercise, would Coastal, if we were to present this to Coastal, Coastal would look at that and say, "Hey, based on this, this should be open space," would we get feedback like that anyway if we weren't even identifying that?
We would get feedback, but we're also, part of the grant deliverables is remapping our ESH, and so ESH is going to be defined in that area over there, I believe. It's, you know, it's sand dune habitat that we're trying to restore, and so we're going to have an overlay that's on top of it, so that'll tell you exactly what you can do. So I think we'll probably be okay there, and that's part of, that's the open space piece, the recreation piece is the area where we recreate, I think. I think there'll be a delineation there that's pretty clear.
And what about, and what about the outfall that runs from the rock down Coleman Drive into the power plant? How will land use interact with something that could be utilized for a commercial that may fall into open space or recreation space?
It's infrastructure. You don't have to deal with it separately. It's not, it's not uses on the land on top of it, it's, again, it's use of existing infrastructure. We have infrastructure through many of our open space areas, that's not uncommon.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? Okay, thanks.
Okay, so the next item is in the downtown, so I think a couple of you are going to have to step down.
And so we, and so I'll look to our city attorney. So this is in the general plan portion of things, not the downtown-specific plan, and I just want to, just maybe you can update us on what our role would be in this conversation.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, because we're now specifically focusing on alternatives that are available in areas that you and Councilmember Heading have property, you should step down.
Okay, all right, good. And then so, on this particular discussion, since Councilmember Heading and myself have properties within this zone, we'll be recusing ourselves, stepping down, and we'll hand, since he's the mayor for Tim, I'll just say, we'll hand the gavel over to Matt, if that's okay?
With the consensus of the other two.
Okay, with consensus, is that okay? Is that okay, Matt?
And it will be for this section and the next one. Both of those deal with the downtown.
This one, and which one?
J.
Section.
Which is the next, the next area.
Because we're within 500 feet of that?
Thousand, right, isn't it?
Five hundred.
So that you, so the mayor can go, and Councilmember Heading? Closer to 1,000 feet away. So yeah, I think, so you both can, I'm sorry, you both can come back, yeah.
Okay, all right, so we'll step, we'll step down on this one here, and we're going to step out that way, thanks.
Okay, so moving over to Site I, as shown on the screen. Preferred alternative for that area is to improve the feel of the area as a gateway, so again, gateway area here as you come in off the roundabout and so forth. Also identified in the draft Downtown Waterfront Strategic Plan and Economic Development Strategic Plan, also in draft format. And we're looking to make changes to the designation for the western, whoops, to the block containing the park. So right now, the park is in that first triangle there, and then you have other uses behind it, and we would be looking to change the overall land use of that block to something, to open space recreation, to allow for expansion, future expansion for park uses. So this would be one of those items that Councilmember McPherson suggested, looking at land uses and changing them and making the things on the ground inconsistent with the land uses, which is what this would do. So again, we would be expanding that open space recreation component to cover the other parcels that are on that lot, to allow for expansion of that park, to create a focal point and a much, over time, hopefully, you know, better and useful gathering point for the city, larger focal point as you come in, is the idea behind that. That was suggested both by your General Plan Advisory Committee and your Planning Commission. I think we have some specific, oh, and comments from the Planning Commission as well, and they also suggested that we take a look at the strip right here. They found this to be a unique strip of land, and that it doesn't have a whole lot of neighbors to it, it backs up to the shopping center, so you could have some more intense-type uses, restaurant-bar-type stuff maybe, where those could be located there and not impact adjacent residential uses because it abuts a shopping center. And so they were looking to maybe, you know, change that area to something that would allow for maybe more family-focused activities and more entertainment-type options. And so they were looking to, that would be, the deviation from the recommended alternative was to maybe intensify the use there. And then also you see the reference, oh, and they also wanted to pull this, these three lots here, your Planning Commission did, out of this planning area, and move it to Planning Area J, which actually makes a lot of sense. Without, take questions, comments?
All right, do we have any questions, Marlese?
Yeah, I was curious about the closed elementary school and where that is on this map, and what they.
It's on the next, on the next.
All right, thank you. So then the other question was, currently, is this strip that you're talking about zoned residential, and you're wanting to change it to mixed use, is that correct?
It's mixed use now, right? They, it's mixed, yeah, but I mean, what they wanted to do is, so the Planning Commission and the General Plan Advisory Committee have been talking about different types of mixed use, and so we just had one mixed use sort of designation previously, and so this would be one of those types that would be maybe a little more intense, maybe could dovetail nicely into an expansion of the park there, where you have, again, sort of more intense-type, gathering-type uses there. Yeah, so it is currently mixed use, Cindy verified that. And they just thought because of its location back at that shopping center, you could do some unique things that maybe generate a little more noise than, you know, than otherwise would be acceptable adjacent to residential uses, and so they wanted to sort of, what is, that area and those lots along there are, some of them are maybe not in the best of shape, and so thought that that might be something that could spur redevelopment of there if we allowed a little more intense use there and kind of were a little more specific and detailed about what we wanted to see there, so that was the Planning Commission's idea.
Okay, and then it says in the text here, "The city should also consider a civic center master plan for the city-owned properties." That's not something we need to be talking about at this stage, is it?
It's, so that is a, that is a long and often discussed topic because of, and that was the idea for a while, I mean, the city acquired property, we have the little park area next to the Public Services Building, and the house that's next to that. We own those properties, we acquired those properties because we were looking to do the civic center idea, I guess, several years ago. And so the idea was to create that, we owned the library property, and it was to turn all that into, and there might have even been a plan at some point that was sort of a rough plan that was put together to what that might look like. So that issue and idea has popped back up throughout both discussions at General Plan, the General Plan Advisory Committee and Planning Commission. It's just, do we want to have discussions about that? Do we want to have policies that would facilitate that in this area? Do we just want to say, "That's a potential that we could do there, and we could note that in our land use and noted in our zoning code that that might be an acceptable thing to do there?"
So the way you've designated it here, that would be possible?
I think so, yes. I think we'd probably more specifically identify it, when we get to zoning, is one of the allowed uses, it would be that. And so if the city wanted at some point in the future to do that, because we have the property sort of configured there to make it happen, we could. I think it's something that's far off in the future.
Yes, indeed. Very far, thank you.
Red?
I'm good with everything that the PC recommended.
I do have one question, and this relates to the commercial district, the pink line going down Moro Bay Boulevard versus the mixed use. Is there, and I understand what you just said in terms of the mixed use backing up against the shopping center, and is there a reason not to have mixed use on, or did you, is that really much what you're saying, not to have mixed use on the other line?
So this is going to be another one of our, another one of our districts that allows mixed use. It's called District Commercial, and this would be one where we were looking to have commercial on the ground floor along there and maybe residential above. And so we have another area, you know, where we're looking at potentially having, the mixed use might be residential above, or it might be commercial above as well. And so we'll be fine-tuning that through zoning, but that's what the idea is here, is to encourage that so we can get some more housing downtown. So, and we'll be talking about, you know, things as we roll out policy related to incentives for some of those things.
Okay, and so I understand, that's totally clear, is it best to call then that one side, the commercial district, and the other one, mixed use? Do we have to do that, or can we call it all mixed use?
The Planning Commission and General Plan Advisory Committee had long discussions on that, wanted them to be separate because they want them to be separate in the zoning because they're going to have different requirements that apply to them and different uses that are associated with them.
Okay, oh, that's clear.
Yeah, so I would say the areas in blue, probably the idea is really not toward the commercial use on the ground floor and the residential above, those probably, those might not work with some of the ideas that they had, so. But it would be appropriate along Moro Bay Boulevard and the areas that are sort of that pinkish, you know, whatever, peach color.
Okay, no, that makes complete sense. All right, that's all of my questions, and we do have, I'd like to open up for public comment right now. We do have Mr. C.R. Cook. If you could, sir, come up and approach the mic.
I'll ask Mr. Graham, he's teaching between zoning and.
Sir, could you announce your name?
Excuse me, C. Randall Cook, property owner at 780 Piney Way, Moro Bay Boulevard. It's in the pink area, and just, Mr. Graham, is this appropriate this time for the comment? You mentioned that zoning is going to be later, because this is actually a request for zoning change for my property, right there on the edge between the C1 zoning and the R4. It's this little tiny square right here, this is Piney Way, it's in between the civic and Moro Bay Boulevard, it's cut off from Moro Bay Boulevard, most of these properties along Moro Bay Boulevard.
So can you, yeah.
The commercial properties, you'll see, yeah, excuse me. The request is to change my property designation from C1, which is the commercial residential, to R4. The basic difference is that, and again, we can have interpretation, is that C1, you have to have major, the commercial use is either the front or the bottom half, and the back half residential has to be secondary. My property was originally a single-family residence, and now the front part, the single-family residence is used as an office, and the back part as an apartment. However, if anyone ever wants to use it now, the front part cannot be used as a residence. R4 permits both, commercial use as well as residential, and I had submitted a letter to Mr. Graham April 17th saying, "Can we look at this to examine changing my little square from C1 to R4 allows more flexibility? It would allow another housing unit in the city if that's what would be wanted." And he had initially told me that the Planning Commission had looked at, said it's not necessary. You would have to bump out the R4, which is immediately adjacent and just south of it, just a little bit. The main reason I was.
The area here is.
Is R4, and that's just across the alley. And the main reason I say that is because my property is not connected to Moro Bay Boulevard. A lot of those C1 properties, they have Moro Bay Boulevard, they got the office complex in the front, the residence in the back, and I'm sort of disassociated with it, so it's a little bit less flexible for use as a commercial space, you know, retail, shopping, it would not be very good for that. And an R4, which would allow either a professional office or a front, you'd residential would be more flexible for it. So I'd asked for that change, and I, I don't know if that's appropriate time to bring this up, if they have that, do I need to submit my letter again as an exhibit for everyone to look at, or?
You can, I have it, they can forward it to the council if they want it, or you can hand it to.
I've got it copied, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Cook, are you finished?
And I'm finished, thank you very much for your look at this.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Or do we have any more public comments? No, so any public comments? So we can open it up to discussion? Do you want to, how would you like to proceed with that, Scott? Do you make suggestions, or?
Yeah, I mean, is there, is there changes, questions about where we've, you know, the preferred alternative, and then, you know, kind of the area where the Planning Commission was going? Do you have concerns about anything that the Planning Commission was putting forward, that type of thing? Do you not like the idea that we, you know, we put the, we made that entire block where the park is, open space recreation, making two uses on that, over there, non-conforming? I think that's an issue. Those would be worthwhile conversations.
So how do you deal with non-conforming uses in a general plan update?
So it's, non-conforming uses relate to the zoning. It does, but it does sort of apply to land use, I guess. We do have policies in our zoning, and that's how we deal with things on the ground, and it allows you to expand certain types of non-conforming things, and allows you to repair them typically, so they don't fall into a state of disrepair, so they're safe for people to occupy, that type of thing. Oftentimes, you can't expand them very much, or can't expand them at all potentially, because they find it to be non-conforming, the idea being that they go away at some point and then be. and then become conforming. In this instance, the city would be looking to probably try to acquire it for park space or something like that in the, in the future. I don't imagine any of those pieces of property there are going to change anytime soon, but this is a, this is a long-term land use document, so.
And if I may add, with regard to the nonconforming issue, a city can set a policy that puts a time limit on how long a nonconforming structure can stay there. My experience has been when that 20 years or 30 years comes up, whoever's on the council then gets barraged and they extend it up another 20 years.
Yeah, I've not found that particularly.
We're not going to kick those folks out, is the point.
That's, I mean, I've, as Mr. Penoni states, I've not found that to be a tool that's often used, in my experience.
Red, do you have any comments?
Yeah, regarding that, that change of land use and zoning, that seems almost like a taking of value.
The properties have value, they're, they can be bought and sold as they sit there today, there's no prohibition on that, their land use remains what they are, and they can continue to operate in the manner that they, that they operate on unless you have a clause like, like Mr. Penoni said, that says they have to go away, that they sunset over at some point, and at that time they need to go away, and the city enforces that. Other than that, no issue. And then it would still be, you know, well, except in these, in this scenario where it would be open space recreation, I don't know what you would bring back that would be similar as far as an economic benefit, but.
Okay, thanks.
I don't have any other comments. I do appreciate the idea of moving that top triangle part in some later date. I think that would make sense, keeping the downtown plan. I agree in terms that we could, the park expansion, I think that would be a good idea in terms of a central location in downtown and visitor-serving. I like, I understand clearly what you're saying about the magenta and blue parts of the diagram, so I'm fine with that. As for our public comment, how would you like Mr. Cook, because I realize we're doing, we're talking about the general plan right now, would you have any suggestions as we move on, what Mr. Cook, how he could pursue this?
He can certainly continue to engage as we move forward for planning discussions and zoning discussions. I don't see the issue that he raises, frankly. The area across the street is R4, the area where his property is, is not, is not R4. It's commercial. And he sits adjacent to a corner that has a commercial building that has several store spaces on it, and he's right down the street from that. You regularly have transitional areas where you have primary retail service commercial that go into office commercial, that go into residential. That's a fairly common development pattern. And I don't see anything wrong with the pattern that we have there, and I don't really see any compelling reason to change it. That's, you know, I mean.
So in terms of this general plan update, what we're doing right now, that necessarily isn't the appropriate time to pursue your concern right now. But by all means, he could take this concern to planning, and he's already come to you.
He's bringing it up as part of land use because it would take a land use change there as well, and it would also take a zoning, land use change from that standpoint. So land use has to be changed, both under the land use map for the general plan and for the land use map for zoning. Again, from a development pattern standpoint, from what's over there, from a transitionary standpoint, probably doesn't make a lot of sense.
Okay, but with that said, it is possible, and you could pursue this through council at a later date to pursue these changes. Right now, I don't think it would be appropriate to.
No, it's appropriate right now, we're here asking you about land use today. And so, so understand where we're going to go from here.
Okay.
We're going to go write policy. We're writing policy right now, but we're going to go write policy on the land use, and we're locking these things in. Now, they can be changed over time, I'm not, I mean, we're sort of defining what those land uses are, and we can move the lines around anytime until we send it off for certification. But the idea is, it's here, you want to have a conversation about it, this is your opportunity.
Okay, so with that said, would anybody like to?
I just need to follow up, another follow-up question. As I understood it, his property was outside of this opportunity area that we're currently looking at. It was abutting it, but it's not in it, is that, it's in it?
It's, yeah, it's, well, at this point, there, that one, I guess. And so you have the two-story buildings on the corner there, I guess apartment units above it, beauty shop, that thing there, a couple of other commercial businesses there, and then you have around the corner going down that street, and he has a, I think his office is there. And then behind us, the residential unit we talked about, we also, depending on how you configure something in that location, they have a residential unit above, which is kind of what we were talking about previously for that, that area, so it does allow for both of those things. Hey, again, from a, from a standpoint, it makes complete sense that that would be zone, our land use plan would be commercial, not residential.
Red, do you have any comments?
I'm satisfied with what Scott says, because Scott's an expert, and I'm going to follow his recommendation.
In terms of knowing that, that area and then where Mr. Cook's property is, I'm also supportive of your explanation of it, Scott. So I would not move myself to change it.
Yeah, I would, I would favor an alternative process to pursue it if he wishes to, but not in this land use planning document.
Certainly, it would be available to process, change, he could do that on his own, so.
All right, so thank you. All right, so with that, we're going to move on to the next item?
Okay, everybody.
All right, do we, are they coming back? All right.
Yeah.
Great work, you guys.
Were you watching?
No.
You're not supposed to.
Matt just wanted that power.
Yeah, he liked it.
Thanks.
All right, welcome back, so we're moving on.
Welcome back.
All right, thanks.
We're moving on to, to site J. The preferred alternative here is to change the designation of the parcels at the shopping center from mixed use to service commercial. And then we're going to need to make some zoning consistency changes as well, once we get to zoning. This is one of those areas where our zoning and land use maps don't mesh very well.
Did you get this?
Yeah. And then we did have some.
Okay, good.
So it's, it's in the area, yeah, right. So it's in the area where you see here, and changing that, these areas here to the service commercial. Planning Commission points in this area were to combine the district commercial and light industrial and call it commercial industrial. They had some significant conversations, you know, in relationship to what we should do with the school, should it remain with the land use classification of high-density residential, or should it be changed to something else? Staff pointed out, and I point out to you as well, that that creates issues with our housing element. That's an area that's identified for high-density residential housing, and so that's where some of our density would live as it relates to our arena numbers. And then they also talked about changing the community center from high-density residential to public facility. That actually probably does make sense, because it's.
You can put houses, you can put houses on top.
Yeah, so I think that, that's probably one that we, we probably do want to make, so. And then I'll go back to the map. So, there's the school site here, and then the community center.
And so places like the church next door, you leave that open because in the future they could do something different, is that right?
That's sort of where we went with that. There was a lot of discussion about what to do with that, and they just sort of fell on leaving it the way that it was. No one had strong feelings one way or the other. Don't often see churches go away, I guess we could have changed it to some, some other classification that just represented what it was. This is also one of those issues where taking it out of the, out of medium-density residential has an issue with our housing element as well. Good, bad, or indifferent, just how they calculate the number of units we're required to accommodate in our zoning.
Any other questions?
Well, I guess I really have an issue about that. I mean, we're not going to tear the church down and build an apartment building there, so it seems to me that our land use plan moving forward should reflect, this is a case where I think it should reflect what's actually there, not.
Why we're having the conversation.
Well, that's my opinion.
And so, I mean, that's, that's notice taken as we go through this. And then I guess the other question I have for you is the area on Quintana, the very slight slivers of red and pink, that, at what point do things like that kind of go away if they're not, they can't be utilized for anything? How does that work? It's basically a revatment.
Some of them have development potential, so that's why that's there. Others may not. I don't know that we went through the complete analysis of where we would completely eliminate them. And then some of those, you know, are, you know, privately held, so need to maintain land uses on them in one way, shape, or form.
Okay.
Just a quick primer for me, the difference between district commercial and service commercial?
Do we have the, I don't have my key. What did I do with the definitions? Sorry, I have to go back and look at the definitions.
That's on page eight of, of your, your report. District commercials serve a regional commercial need such as shopping centers and major goods and services, and service commercial uses that are not compatible with residential neighborhoods as well as light industrial manufacturing uses, particularly those related to commercial fishing.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis.
Quick question, in that area, as we're talking about the church being medium-density residential, and then the trailer park being district commercial, when you're talking about the housing element, I mean, at what point do you want to designate something like that that is?
The trailer park is.
Wouldn't we want to retain that?
The, I know that the, the General Plan Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission didn't have a lot of discussion on that topic, I have to admit, I don't recall them touching base on it much. I do remember having the conversation related to the church, but, but not as it related to that one trailer park that's over there. I, yeah, I don't remember them weighing in on it, speaking to it.
Yeah, hey, you know, I know as we, just take the comments, I think, you know, that'll be work, part of the process, and I trust we'll get some more information as we get back on that. Specifically, I would imagine Coastal will have some comments on some of these issues as well, but, yeah, anything else?
Just, so I found, it was on page six of the new, I couldn't find eight, I always kept looking, but anyway. The question was on the, the district commercial being a regional commercial need such as shop, shopping centers, major goods. How does that go with Quintana there, that, the section that is district commercial that, that faces Quintana Road there on the, right between the two, two red zones that are a service commercial that break there? I'm not sure I.
I think that the, oh, the differentiation for the two shopping centers.
Yeah, on the east side of Quintana, the, the pink district commercial there in between the service commercial zones, I'm not, I don't get it.
District commercial.
District commercial means regional commercial need such as shopping center, major goods, services.
I think.
Should it not be continued?
I think they, they had that as, because that's, we had the conversation, that's related to the, it's got fast food and stuff on it, right? So it's got the Burger King. Yeah, Burger King and the Med Stop and those types of things. I'm trying to remember, I apologize, I'm trying to remember what the conversation was on it, that's all.
Okay, the Burger King's there, Med Stop, then I get it, okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, those are things, I mean, you're seeing those as you go by the highway, those are areas that you might stop as a result of those types of things.
Right.
And I know that we did talk about it, and that was sort of the tenor of the conversation was on those items, and, and, and the direction, where we drew the lines on these came out of the G-PAC and the, and the Planning Commission.
So Scott, in reference to some of the comments we've made, I mean, unless you need some consensus and request that, hey, change the zoning on the church, or change the zoning on where the trailer park is, you know, tell us, give us feedback on that, or, and when I'm, as I'm processing through there, I'm thinking, okay, I know we've got more to get through, and there's, you're, I kind of envision some of those comments are, okay, note taken, we're working on those, and it will come back in a different evolution based on all our input, unless you want a hard line and say, change this, or, so I just want some feedback on.
So that's good, so yeah, I would like, if you, like the church idea, I would like you all to make a decision on whether you'd like us to come back with that being something else. It does make complete sense if you want to do it that way. I think, you know, why they didn't was, you know, the, we had the conversation related to the housing element, and they were like, there was some concern about what that might mean for that.
And so we have concern with the housing element because it'll, it'll affect our housing element, but the reality is, that's what our use is, so, I mean, we should be addressing our housing element with the realities that we have.
Well, and actually, legislation's changing now, so it probably, that whole thing where you're accommodating the, the density is probably not going to be enough.
Yeah.
So.
So, I'll take some.
Change it for the appropriate use, then, I agree.
Okay, all right.
Well, wait a minute.
And that's, that's what we're here for. Go ahead, Red.
Okay. I could easily see the church moving, it's private property, and a church, there are a lot of places you see where church buildings used to be, and now they're not. So the, the owners of the church could decide to buy another piece of property and build another church, so, you know, if this helps us with our arena number, I, I'm okay with, with continuing it, you know, understanding that the church will stay there as long as it wants.
Yeah, I mean, I would also note that, I mean, that's actually a very good point, and most, we have, most of our churches are in residential neighborhoods, they have residential zoning on them. I mean, so that's not, I mean, this is not like, this is an odd thing, it just kind of stands out where it's located. Why, why are we saying, hey, change the community center to public facility and not the church to something else that's reflective of what it is? Well, it's got residential zoning on it, just like most of the other churches in town do, because they're located in residential zones, so that's a, that's a worthwhile topic to discuss.
I would concede to Red's point personally.
I would just point out that, that all the buildings around it are commercial. It's across the street from the community center, it's adjacent to the shopping center, it's, it's, it's across the street from the library. I mean, there is no residence around it, so it's not like it's residential, or likely to be residential, so.
And, and so, we need to get through this, I know we're getting really into the details, and I can see us doing another session of this because we're not going to get through it. So, not to cut anybody off, but did you have some comments, Mari?
No questions.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Just one last quick, I'm sorry, comment on the, the, where the U-Haul is there in the service commercial, was there any discussion of changing that to district commercial in anticipation of there being a similar possible change in the future to something like that?
It didn't come up, I think they were just reflective of what was there, and that instance, the things that were there weren't, didn't fall into that category when they started looking at uses, and so they left it at that.
I know there was a plan that.
It could, yes, it could, and that plan would have changed it to something that's more akin to the district commercial, you're correct. So, but you could put both there, so, I mean, it wouldn't prohibit the use, in other words.
And so, just to finalize and pick up on, if we go back to page 39 on Highway 41, you made that intersection reflect what the Economic Development Strategic Plan was kind of pointing out at that intersection for certain word, terms, so I'm expecting that if there was likewise instruction from that, you might want to incorporate that into this, this section as well. Would that be fair?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I think we can rest through that one, as, I know we had good discussion on it, but I think we'll, we'll work out on that. Are we okay on that?
I would just like to say one more thing. Because an area is surrounded by commercial property, I think makes it a prime residential area insofar as we want to build more walkable cities.
Great point. Thank you.
Yeah, good point. Yeah, good point.
Okay.
Okay, so, we're done with land use inside the city.
Okay, good job. We've got 10 minutes.
So, well, we'll probably use it up on this one.
Okay.
So, this is, this basically involves the Chevron area. This is study area one. We have four study areas. And the idea that came out of, it's, well, it's, I guess it's mostly Chevron, and then these properties here, McLevein and Rigetti and the piece that's there. The preferred alternative of the General Plan Advisory Committee was to keep all this stuff out here in our planning area, just meaning we get to, we get a say on it, and the county has to consult us when development happens out there. And then to include this area that's hatched and surrounded in red in the city's sphere of influence. So, this would be a change to our sphere, include these. The idea is to preserve the backdrop of the city in that location. There are sort of ridges on those properties, and they could put houses at the top of them. And G-PAC and Planning Commission thought that we maybe don't want that to happen, and so it'd be nice if we developed policies that said you can't do that, and then brought that into the sphere so they could be annexed so that we could make sure that that didn't happen. The other alternative over here was, instead of having it be designated agriculture, have it designated open space recreation. That, again, that didn't really go anywhere with either of the G-PAC or the Planning Commission. This talks specifically about the lots that are involved. And I don't know if you can read the fine print on the, on the, on those slides, but it just talks about the two different alternatives, you know, with the area outside, with the area out here, so the open space versus the agricultural. And this is what the Planning Commission wanted to see. Okay, so the Planning Commission said, why, we want to, whoops, we want to have that same area that the General Plan Advisory Committee wanted, but we also want to add this second tier of lots here, because what happens is the land out there rolls, and then rolls again. And so there are basically two ridges that are out there, and those are two ridges that people could put homes on if Chevron just sells all those properties off and we don't get a preservation move out of this, which is what we're hoping we get. And then also, Planning Commission said, hey, we want to control the entryway to that property. If anything's going to be developed there, it should be developed in the city of Moro Bay and not in the county. So, Planning Commission being your, your land use advisory body was much more in tune with what could happen out there and wanting the city to have a say. I would say the General Plan Advisory Committee was, talked about all these options that you're seeing here, but was like, was more conservative, I guess, and said, well, maybe we just need to deal with this, addresses the issue at hand, and that's just that first tier. And so, and Planning Commission also wanted to add these two properties out here to it, and probably we need to include that little donut hole right there that it will create, because it matches up with the next planning area two, area that's there. And so that's why they wanted to include that. And that's just in the planning area, so anything that happens out there, we get notified of, we get a little bit of a say in it, I guess.
So, comments on this site?
Yeah, so we'd be looking to see, do you like what G-PAC suggested? Do you like what Planning Commission suggested? I really need you to tell me. Or do you have some other third alternative that you want to see?
I'd start off with some comments on the one, so in the yellow area on 41, the two additional lots. So, that was an additional, an added item for sphere of influence.
Not sphere, planning area.
Planning area.
Yeah, I apologize.
I would say, okay, and so I would include the one little bare sliver that is actually, yes, that's actually part of a Dyna, Dyna G property. There's, it makes sense, and there's actually a connection back to the infrastructure that goes there. So I would, that would probably, should be part of the planning area as well, in my view, and I'd like to have some conversation with the rest of council on that. And then, and then the other one is the, the little indentation, green indentation that is that area there. I guess I just view that as a consideration for sphere of influence in what was recommended by Planning Commission. And that would make those contiguous in that, in that area. Those were, those are my comments, and would, anybody else for comments? Red?
Did the PC want to include Lot 15? I can't tell from the map.
Yes.
Okay. And was there any discussion about Chevron's 3B alternative annexing, a potential annex of the land-along panorama? Like, there's, do you want to hear anything about that?
So, so, I mean, you're, you're talking about that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is a proposal, right, mostly? Isn't that what the thing you're talking about?
Yeah, that's, that's 3A, and I think the difference is that it doesn't include parcel 15.
There it does. There you go, 3B.
Yeah, yeah. And I saw Mr. Teft wanted to add parcel 15, and I know I certainly do also.
15 is included in the, in the proposal from, that I showed you from Planning Commission.
Okay, so-
This is a Chevron proposal that's come out as part of the preservation efforts for the Chevron property. So, this area here is all the same area- That your Planning Commission is recommending be included in the sphere, as well as the, the couple of properties out here. Also here, you see this little yellow area here. The discussion has been, as part of the preservation move with the Chevron lots, is to push the density down in that, that area. That's not really what we're here to talk about tonight. But that's the idea, though, is to push it down there. That's what I was talking about. We don't want to have the houses on the ridges. We want to have the houses down next to other houses. You know, that's what policy looks like when we get to that point. We're not really there yet, so. But this is the map that the Planning Commission was, was looking at when they came up with that idea for the sphere of influence, and the expansion of the planning area.
Okay. Any other comments? Red, are you?
Yeah, so, so that's what I would support. And, and they also had a note about Dog Beach, and I think we, I think everybody wants to keep Dog Beach the way it is.
Matt? I too would prefer making sure that we can put our stake into having our voice heard on this property. John?
I support the Planning Commission changes as well as what Mayor Irons had suggested with regard to the Dyna G property.
This one here?
Yes.
And what about this?
And, yes.
Okay.
I'm on board with that, too.
Okay.
Well, you made it very easy.
Okay.
Is there any other comments on this?
Any other comments?
We're good.
Seeing none. Thanks.
The next one is planning area two. The idea is just to include this in the city's planning area. That gives us, again, a little say when what happens out here. County knows that. We have an agreement with them. We get notice of projects out in this area. The idea would be, you know, from our standpoint, that, you know, in our efforts, it would be, remain agricultural. There's no idea to change that later in the future, or really annex it, just to keep an eye on it, and, and what's happening out in that corridor. Questions, comments?
Seems pretty clean.
Okay. Area three. So this is Tri-W inside the city, Tri-W outside the city, one location for the wherf, just in that corner. Again, this is pretty much the same idea, is to include it in the city's planning area, keep it as agricultural, maybe change the piece if the wherf goes there, to reflect that use, which would be public facilities. If it doesn't go there, the whole thing stays agriculture. That's about it.
Support?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, the last one. This is area four. It's basically the same as the others. You know, it's a planning area, it has, you know, going out in that area, and the idea is just to keep it as agriculture, and to keep our tabs on anything that the, the county might be looking to do out there, or prove out there from a, you know, development standpoint.
Scott, there's also in this area, down closer to South Bay, there are some preserved property through the Chumash, what do they call it, the land, Chumash land by, through Cal Poly. Is that not-
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
Yeah, on, I do believe so.
Okay.
Along the creek there.
Well, I have to look into that. I'm not a-
Or am I totally off? Or, you know, actually, I think I am. I'm, I'm thinking further up here by Canay Road. Is that, am I not, am I-
This goes to, this extends all the way to the edge of Canay.
Yeah.
Something we could probably find out, huh?
Yeah, so probably need to, maybe, I mean, worthwhile looking at if we're gonna, yeah.
I think they call them the, is it the Choro Flats Project?
Yeah, that might be, yeah.
Yes, I think that's what it is, and that goes along the creek area in terms of the preservation, yes.
We'll, we'll definitely look into that.
Okay.
Thank you. That's actually helpful.
Right up onto the, the time, so, anything else? Any, any closing comments? We're good on supportive input? Good, I'm getting right up to the time. Just want to make sure. Any final comments?
That was fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. That's running right up to the time. So with that, unless there's any other closing comments, we can adjourn this special meeting, and then we'll continue our regular city council meeting at 6 o'clock in 30 minutes. Thanks very much.
Oh, well.
All right.